Now he's in as Wally.
Thanks.
There we go. Sorry about that.
There we go. No problem.
Problem.
We thought Jane was joining us today instead.
Too many Zoom meetings in our life.
Yeah, we don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Do we? I think we're waiting for David. Do we have David yet?
David won't be on for about 15 minutes, so we can.
Oh, okay. Then Court Cynthia, what do you mean? Okay, I think we have everybody.
Yep. So I'd like to bring the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting to order. Just know we're being recorded.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order. Note the same. Thanks, everyone, for doing this. And also just a quick thanks for being ready to meet today instead of next Tuesday, since we had to move things up because of budget schedules. So thanks to everyone for your flexibility. The first thing we have on is the public hearing on school choice. So Lori, you've figured out how that's going to work, right?
Yes, it's going to run the same way the Finance Committee did the other night. So if people want to give us questions or feedback, they hit the button to raise their hand. And you can do that if you hit the Participants button. And when the participants pop up, you can see at the bottom right, there's a raise hand option. And you click that, and then the moderator can see that you want to speak, and the chairs can call on you.
Hi, I'm sorry. Lori, do you mind if I just add to that?
Not at all.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is Chris Carmody from the Town Manager's Office. So we have changed the format a little bit. So we are doing a webinar instead of a typical Zoom meeting. So I will promote the chairs of the committees to co-host this, and this will allow them to see the Q and As. So we're asking that all committee members activate their videos, and everyone who's not a committee member or staffer turn off their videos. And so the I think Heather, Court, and Wally, you should now be able to see a Q and A function at the bottom of your screen, allowing you to see questions typed in. And then you can also recognize people, attendees. If you, if their hand is raised, you can click on them and open up their mic.
Participants, correct?
Yes, if you open up your Participants menu.
Okay. So we don't see any. Do we have to open this hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes, let's do that first. I just wanted to get the logistics straight first.
I think we do, right? You can see both of those, Participants and Q and A.
Yes. Yep. Yep, I can see Participants and panelists. I don't see any. And I see one hand raised already. Oh, no, just went away. Never mind.
I think Brian's just testing out the functionality.
Okay, got it.
But I think we're all set. So I'll be here if, for any support.
Thank you.
Okay, got it. And Lori, remind us, I should know, since I've done this now five years in a row.
We need to call both committees to order on the hearing and then look at the memo.
We, we open it. But do we need to vote to open it or no? We just.
The chairs declare the hearing.
Chairs declare it, right? Yeah, okay. So for Concord, I will open the public hearing on school choice for the Concord School Committee.
And I would open the public hearing on school choice for the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee.
Okay. And Lori, you're going to share the memo with?
Sure, I'll just, I won't read it to you, but I'll just give you the highlights. Every year by June 1st, we have to vote whether or not we're going to participate in school choice. That, that is about kids coming to our schools. Kids can always go out to school choice schools in other districts. This is about us receiving school students. The committee has to decide that, and then we need to let the state know what your vote was. I am recommending that you vote, as has been the case in the past, that we vote not to participate in school choice for the reasons which are in alignment with the state law, that our enrollment is too close to the capacity of the buildings that we have, and there is not an equitable or adequate transportation system to allow all students to be able to attend a school in another district. And that would eliminate the options for some kids to participate. So that's very routine for us, that that's our discussion, because those, those two conditions have been the same for a pretty extended period of time.
So first, any questions from committee members?
I'm wondering, should we first make the motion and then have a discussion?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So could some, somebody who has the motion in front of them, I have it, I can read it if necessary.
Go ahead, Wally.
Good. Can I have that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote not to participate in school choice for the school year 2020 to 2021?
So moved for both committees?
Okay, and.
Second for both.
Okay, and we'll need a roll.
Discussion.
Yeah, so let's have any discussion.
Sorry. So any members have comments?
I have a quick comment. School choice in the age of COVID-19, it probably, it doesn't sound like a good option as we actually don't need to expand anymore, don't need to add any more students to our classrooms. Smaller classrooms, smaller groups of students will be much easier to accommodate with split up schedules and things like that. So we're looking to uncharted waters for, for next year. So I, you know, beyond the obvious, that Concord Carlisle Regional High School is so close to the, to its levels, it would not make any sense in, in the new era of COVID-19.
I would agree with that.
Any other comments? Don't see any questions or any hands raised.
Well, let's open it to the public, because I did just say for now committees from, I mean, sorry, questions from the committee, but let's just make sure. Are there any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none.
So we want to do a roll, and we'll just do both, and, or do we need to split them up?
I, I think by roll call, we can each vote for both, if we're on vote.
So one of them, just go ahead here.
Aye for both.
Mustafi.
Mustafi for the region.
Booth.
Aye for both.
Brady.
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing for school choice for both?
So moved for both.
Second for both.
Okay. Booth.
Aye for both.
Brady.
Aye for both.
Aye for both.
Mustafi.
Mustafi for our region.
Johnston, aye for both. So I think we're open.
Okay, I think you just have to close the hearing, and then we can go back to the agenda.
The hearing's closed.
That's what, that was that vote. Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so we're good. So we're up to correspondence. That's mostly you this time, Wally.
Yeah, we had several letters about the, how we're going to handle spring coaching compensation. All were in favor of doing so, of paying spring teachers, spring coaches. And I think that was the only topic that we heard from.
That's all I saw.
Well, Wally, didn't we get one email on grading at the high school? I know it was, it seems like it was like three weeks ago.
That seems like ages ago. Maybe that was in the most recent time frame. Yep.
Sorry, I keep bouncing.
No, that's okay. Next, we have Chair and Liaison Reports. I have something to mention as Chair's report, but did you want to do anything else first, Wally?
No.
Okay. Then I just, you've all seen this, but I wanted to make sure, especially given that this is Teacher Appreciation Week, as we've all heard, that we really express our appreciation to the teachers. So to do that, we have written a letter that is going out, and I don't know if it's gone already or is going out today, to all CPS and CC teachers. And I thought I would read it here so that we can all express our appreciation in public. So what we have written is, "To the teachers of the Concord and Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle High School, we find ourselves in a world today that is unlike any that we could have imagined eight weeks ago. We find ourselves redefining the concepts of education, socialization, and even community. Many of us find ourselves at a loss, grasping for connection, predictability, or some sense of normalcy. At the same time, we also find ourselves miraculously supported in this process of searching and redefining by all of you, our incredible dedicated team of teachers. Eight weeks ago, the idea of transitioning school to a remote experience would have seemed baffling, ludicrous even. Changes to learning plans or curriculum would take months or even years of research, testing, revision, and training. On March 13th, we were forced to close the doors of the schools, and within 48 hours, teachers introduced a remote learning plan for all students in our district. To be clear, hold on, that's background noise in my house, one second.
Oh dear.
Sorry. "To be clear, this is an incredible feat. Since then, you've collaborated amongst yourselves and with administrators to refine and improve this plan, all the while maintaining a constant level of support and engagement for students. In a time of such uncertainty, this support and engagement are truly invaluable. You've provided students with a structure for their days, a platform for productivity, and a sense of community. You've given them, both literally and figuratively, a reason to get up every morning. It's like it only scratches the surface to say a mere thank you, we would like to express our deep and genuine gratitude for the time, effort, creativity, determination, and thoughtful care that you dedicate to our students every day. From all of us to all of you, thank you. Sincerely, the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees." So we just obviously want to share that with all of the teachers, and we look forward to all of them getting that as an email also. Yeah. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything on that or have anything as Liaison Reports?
No, I would simply say thank you for brilliantly expressing the sentiments of this committee. Thank you. And, and the interruption was perfect.
I was staged.
It's our world, right?
It's volumes to the new world.
Oh, you know what? While I'm mentioning appreciation of our world right now, I hope you can hear me now. Okay, there's something going on in the room. I, I have to also get a special shout out to the FIS Ed teachers, because I spent an hour and a half, almost two hours this morning, with my kids outside doing field day games, and that was elementary to high school kids. And we had such a great morning, throwing sock balls into laundry baskets and hitting targets and playing all these field day games that the FIS Ed department has set out. And it was, it was terrific. So a big shout out for that.
That's great.
Great. I'll pass that along. Yeah, thank you. That's great.
It was terrific.
Good stuff. Thank you. Okay, any other Liaison Reports? So Superintendent's report.
The main thing I was going to report out on at our next meeting, hopefully in a much bigger detail, we're really starting to think about Phase Four and reentry. Just naming some of the big buckets of things that need to get looked at, which range everywhere from learning and a blended inquiry-based, flexible, robust learning plan to health and safety across a number of settings, which includes food service and transportation and cleaning of the schools, how, or if we do any traditional or larger events, or even phase the man, as well as our Health Service Office roles that they would have, our connection with our community partnerships, like those especially who share kids or facilities with us, Concord Recreation and Concord Children's Center, for example, all the way to the parent input and structures we want to use to figure all this out. So I will, I will save most of my comments, because we need a much more in-depth conversation at the next School Committee meeting and suggest to you a strategy to build structure and just a means to manage all of that. And I think I'll leave it at that for today, because I think we need to spend the time on the budget, given the timeliness of that. And at our next meeting, I would enjoy and appreciate and need the direction and input on all of those moving pieces so that we use the next couple of months really productively to plan.
Great. Thank you. It's great. It's obviously important, more than important critical, but great to see that this is all in the works already. So thanks for getting, getting us going on this.
And, you know, that information is going to be critical to our ability to really think in detail any budgets as we move forward. So, but one of the reasons we're doing this today is because we are smack dab in the middle of two Finance Committee meetings. Concord having held one on Monday, as well as Carlisle, and then Carlisle has another one we've been invited to on Monday. The, so our next item here is to hear budget status of FY20 and FY21.
Do we want to start with the athletics or no?
We can do that, sure.
Do you want me to go, Lori?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I'll give a high-level view. We have 22 spring coaching positions at the high school. Two are currently vacant. All of the spring coaches have continued to provide services to our students in whatever capacity they can. So like I said, we have 22 spring coaches, two are currently vacant. The total cost of the 20 coaches, including assistant coaches, is $117,823. And just to let you know some percentages, if we were to pay 25% of that, it would be $29,456. 50% would be $58,912. 75% would be $88,367. This is a general fund expense. The user fees does go into the Athletics revolving account. And I'll speak about the athletic revolving account in my next section. I did get that athletic revolving account back to where I think that we should end. So I did cover those user fees lost. And then in your packets, you saw a number of memos and from the coaches and what they're doing from lacrosse, the baseball, to, I believe, track and tennis.
Thank you. So we don't really, if we, I think we should have a discussion about this and just generally see where people are. And we'll see what falls out from that. If we're, I think if we're going to pay them in full, then there's really nothing we have to do. If we're going to adjust that, then we'll probably need a motion to, to that effect. So any, any comments on this?
Well, I think if we put this in the larger context of school staffing, we understand that we are compensating everybody in the district as if they were working in the jobs they had expected in the way they had expected. This means that people have perhaps repurposed. We know teachers certainly have changed their, their, their methods. But I think we need to point out that larger context. I would hope that we see that the Superintendent receives from the Director of Athletics a thorough report on how this shift has occurred and what the challenges have been, because it may inform how things go forward with sports and athletics. So I'd hope we capitalize on how all of these coaches independently, at their own initiative, took this on so that it can be more of a system-wide driven effort in the future with, with lessons learned. Question, Jared, for you. You were able to restore the revolving that were user fee sourced. How does that happen? How do we, how do we get back money and restore those funds if those are the sources of these refunds?
A lot of athletics is covered by the general fund. There are certainly offsets to the lost user fees. We pay transportation costs out of the athletic revolving. We pay for officials. That can range anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000, give or take, depending on how far our teams get in the playoffs. And so usually, towards the end of the year, what we do is we look at our, we look at our revolving account balances. And then depending on where they are, we reclassify funds to the general fund. So in this case, we were just charging a little bit less to the athletic revolving account, charging more to the general fund, so we can have that contingency going forward. We started the year with about $57,000, and I'm hoping to end the year right now with about $70,000. We are processing all of our, our user fees that returns back to the parents. The only ones I believe that have not yet been returned are the checks. There's a little bit more of a process for that, but we are working on it.
Okay, we don't, we don't get the, and give the same scrutiny to revolving funds that we do to the general fund where we see these transfers. So this is where we would see the movement is in the general fund, monies inbound or outbound that relate to revolving funds. Am I correct?
Yeah. And what we do, what I always do is I always keep our budget in budget. So I make transfers to make sure that these lines are covered, so I do not have any negative lines. And then when you do see those transfer reports, the, the, the monthly status reports, you will see by 101,000 level where these are.
Got it. Thank you.
And Jared, I think, I know the answer, but for spring sports, we get lower enrollment or fees because people hit the cap, right?
Correct. Yeah.
I think. Go ahead.
The last thing, there are also some uniform expenses that were encumbered at one point that did not happen as well. So that also, we will have funds for next year or expenses for next year that we will have to cover those with the existing funds in the account. But we didn't process some of the requests that really came after March 13th.
One of the things I think is important to point out is when we decided, when we made the decision to close school buildings and subsequently suspend spring sports. You know, we were, spring season was effectively underway from a planning standpoint or reach out standpoint to participants. And as we've learned from the myriad of letters we've received, these coaches have been engaged with students throughout this spring, both in opportunities to train and to, you know, just be thinking about their sports in a way that is certainly beneficial, given what we're going through to those students. And unfortunately, you know, for the seniors, you know, they're going to be missing their final season, which is no fun. But it appears to me that the experience is that, you know, these folks have done their, done their duty above and beyond in some ways, and I would certainly recommend we pay them.
I would just add to Wally's comments that you have to remember they, MIAA didn't cancel the season March 13th. There were continued extensions based on the governor's orders of school closure. So there was hope for a spring all the way up until April 24th. I think we should factor that in, because all the way until the end of April, the coaches were gearing up to get back. And that did include a large amount of engagement with the kids, for sure.
And just logistics of redoing the schedules and trying to see if they could figure out a way to get, you know, appropriate number of games in, and will there be a postseason? And, and I know a couple of sports are trying to make arrangements for the seniors to have some kind of activity this summer, you know, assuming that they could do it safely. So, and then one other thing I want to say is, and it's not just for the spring, but there's just year-round activity engaged, you know, the coaches engage with students pretty much on a year-round basis for many of the sports. So I just wanted to make that, that was sort of a theme in the letters as well.
I just wanted to add that the Superintendent did share the schedule and, and the programming that the coaches have been conducting since the school closings. And I would think that these are all of the sports that are currently, the spring sports are included in that information. The ball, lacrosse, baseball, softball, running, tennis, yoga. So it, it looks like a pretty full schedule, engaging kids in physical activity where it's hard to get these kids outside, you know, and they need that routine and they need that little push.
I agree. I'm not going to restate it all, but I agree with everything everyone said, and I'm in supportive vein.
So I don't hear anything to the contrary of paying the stipends for coaches. And if that's the case, why don't we move on?
Yeah, I just, again, want to thank all the parents who reached out to us to share their perspective.
Absolutely.
Definitely. It was very helpful.
Jared, do you want to carry on?
All right. So I'm not sure how, well, I can go pretty deep. David's not here yet. So I sent the state of the budget to you all yesterday. So I'll just quickly go through that and show there's a lot of questions.
I have a question upfront, and I was going to try to slip in when we were doing the Chair's, the Liaison Reports. This is not, I just want to, this is not factoring in and Concord specific budget alteration, correct?
No.
Okay.
This is general fund for CPS and revolving accounts and its revenue state for the high school. Yeah. So since my last memo on the 15th, there's really been no change on what the state is saying. They're continuing to say that they're about $4 to $6 billion projected short in revenue. Their total budget is $31.1 million. They do have a rainy day fund of $3.4 billion, which is high for many states, and hopefully that will help out some of the town city deficit. We are going to get some money for the CARES Act. I'm hoping to get some that next week. I anticipate only about $96,000 for CPS and $24,000 for the high school. The way that that works is they told us to factor about 80% of what we get for Title I. We can use that monies up until September of 2022, which is the beginning of FY23. So the preliminary governor's budget, when I look back at the revenue, we were, had a delta of a plus $54,000. That's because we voted a budget, you know, roughly a month before, a month and a half before that initial budget came out. Circuit breaker as well, those numbers are not out, but I projected circuit breaker to be $956,371 at CPS. So, sorry, I get confused a little bit. So what, what I did is I took a look at 2010, and I think you've seen these numbers before. I wanted to see what that would look like now, if it was the same sort of cuts. And because we got the ARRA funds in 2010, at the high school, it was about $175,000 delta. Again, this doesn't take into any account about local receipts or, or any of that. So I expect a very little. So I expect a very little bit amount to be cut in Chapter 70. But they could also put that, give us some monies back. I expect them to certainly cut Chapter 71 regional transportation. I expect them to cut circuit breaker reimbursement. They will start cutting the circuit breaker transportation piece that is budgeted this year. It came out after we voted our budget, so I was not counting on that. I'm not exactly sure how much that would be. It would be 25% of our transportation costs, give or take. So it could be a significant amount that it would start off the top and then would cut that we wouldn't really feel any impact of. So as you know, I'm continuing to be in closeout mode. I'm closing all of our POs. I'm working with positions to get rid of them or see if they need them. I am not only preparing for next year, but I'm really concerned in preparing for FY '22. So starting with the Concord Public Schools, on April 13th, I brought to you the numbers, 929,000 is an unencumbered available balance at CPS. But at that time, we had no real reserves. Our, we, our circuit breaker balance was really at zero. I did not actually intend on having much carryover on that. And our food services account was, was depleted. We expected to lose about $160,000 between loss of revenue and paying the staff. So what I was able to do in the past month was take a look at all of our open accounts, take a look at our revolving accounts and put about $600,000 back into circuit breaker that can be hopefully carried on to next year. And then I, I brought the food service account back into good standing. We started the year with a circuit breaker balance of 544,000, really 545. So if I can get that at 600, I'm, I'm feeling very, very good about that. Our food service balance had about a 249,000, which is a little bit higher than really you want. It's more than, it's roughly more than three months worth of expenses. So I'm expecting about $200,000 right now in the positive to go, to be put back into the food service account. Therefore, I have a $65,000 available balance as of the 6th at CPS that will be fluid. But I do expect there to be available balances that we can figure out what we want to do with at CPS to offset next year. Also, my max fourth circuit breaker is 802,000. If the school committee does want to prepay tuitions, I would say, because we're allowed to prepay all of our collaborative tuitions. And we are allowed to pay three months' worth of the other non collaborative tuitions. My recommendation would be to first maxing out the circuit breaker before we do that. And that would be another 202,000 in the circuit breaker account. At the high school, the high school is a little bit different of a story. So on the, on the 13th, I brought to you all an unencumbered balance of just over 826,000.
Jared.
I have over 1.2 million in available balances. That just goes to show you really how fluid, how fluid that our, our budgets are. It's not going to be fluid like that anymore, but you know, when we're in closeout mode, there are some POs and stuff that, that you liquidate and a big available balance goes towards, becomes available. So right now we have about 1.2 million unencumbered as a result of all those things. In addition, I have maximized our, our circuit breaker account. We have right now, I'm anticipating 1,65,000. Last year's beginning balance was 598,000. So that is a great contingency for that. Our athletics, as I said before, we started with about 57,000. I'm anticipating an end in balance of 70,000. In the food service balance, we are expecting to have about 130,000 in the positive. We began the year with 121 and due to the COVID-19, I'm expecting, I was expecting a loss of 204,000. So that's, that's really good, good there. In addition, I'm still expecting a surplus in our revenue of 331,000. That will automatically go into E and D. I think I need about 350 to get to the 5% account. Anything over that goes back to the two towns. They're not talking about any cuts to FY '20. Recently I was asked by the Concord, the Carlisle Five Committee, Carlisle Finance Committee, just to take a look at what a 5% assessment reduction would look like in FY '21. So I did a number of different scenarios. To start the year, Carlisle, our initial school committee approved budget, Carlisle actually had a negative assessment of, I think it was 0.93 for non debt assessments and a negative 1.6 if you include the debt because debt is going down. So if we were going to reduce our non debt assessment by 5%, that would roughly be a $1,364,000 reduction. And Carlisle would get roughly 326,000 of that portion due to the, the ratio. And Concord would get, would be reduced 1,380,000 in their assessments. Another scenario I looked at was what would it look like if we included the debt portion? That would be about 1,580,000 and the split would be roughly 377 back to Carlisle, 1.2 to Concord. So what also I did just for this exercise is what are some things that we could include if we needed to get back to that 5%? The first thing that I would look at is the FY '20 available balance and try and prepay things that we can prepay. One would potentially be our OPEB obligation for FY '21. That's 550,000. Another option could possibly be purchasing the two new bus leases at the high school next year, two new buses. Purchasing the two new buses instead of leasing them. That would be an upfront cost of 125,000 per bus, give or take, and it would only save us 50,000. Another would be to prepay our first three months of tuitions. That would be approximately 165,000. We could purchase the FY '20 replacement cycle of the laptops. That would be 400,000. And also it's very important too that, that we understand that any offsets taken this year in next year's budget would be very tough to make up and it would cause a gap in future years. And, and we're currently reviewing options beyond these, like we have a big list. On these, of these options I just stated, and we believe these budget, these drivers, if we didn't do these, you're looking at personnel and program. So, yeah.
So it, why don't we sort of start on, well, I guess let's talk about what we need to try to accomplish in this meeting. We do have a meeting on Monday with FinCom and Carlisle. As stated, that's where the request for the exercise of a 5% reduction in the budget has come from. My understanding is that most of the town departments in Carlisle are trying to show what those budgets would look like. We are looking for a way to lower the fiscal year 21 budget ask. And we have the benefit of some of these overages that we can put to our expenses for next year. And that will lower that number somewhat. And then we have to consider what we would want to include or how we would want to present what that fiscal year 21 budget would look like with a, with a 5% cut in it. If we choose to do that. The reduction, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was unable to attend the meeting, but the reduction in the conversation for Concord FinCom was about 3.25% if I remember correctly.
2.3.
2.3.
Right. I, I just want to interject. I think that's a very rosy outlook. And I would have liked to ask the Director of Finance a couple of other scenarios. Because that really looks like, you know, I don't want to go into the details, but that looks at property taxes dropping. And it also expects the Concord economy to really come back. I, I just don't know if that's realistic or that's the only scenario.
Cynthia, are you saying that the Concord FinCom is predicting that their receipts, their townwide receipts will drop by that amount?
2.3, yes. So I, you know, I guess we need, would need to know the impact to our, you know, if we had a 2.3 drop on the Concord side at both the region and Concord Public Schools. But what are the possible other scenarios? Obviously we'll know more in the next couple, you know, coming months. But.
Yeah, I can, I can explain a little bit. Sorry, my house is crazy right now. I was just distracted for a second. We had three Zoom calls going on at one time. So roughly if we use approximately the, the, you know, 2, 2.3, well, really 2.7 to 3 million is what they were reporting yesterday in potential losses of revenue. So if we went on the high side and said around 3 million, starting at CPS, you're probably looking at about if, if they took the town's budget, CPS budget and the high school budget, and they did an equal share of what that 3 million would look like, and they dropped the guidelines by that. The schools have approximately 68% of that portion. So you're looking at about 1.3 million, give or take at CPS. And then you're looking at 750 plus for Concord's portion of the high school budget. And then you would have Carlisle's portion. And then you, then in addition to that, any loss of state aid, circuit breaker, et cetera. So, I mean, those are rough estimates right now. We're still in discussions. But the, those are the numbers that are, that I'm thinking.
Right, Jared, what, what if we did have a much more bleak scenario of something closer to five?
If we had something at five and you're just talking about the assessments, you're looking at, you're looking at the high school alone to be about 1.3 million. And then the Concord budget, you, you're looking at, I do it in my head, 1.7, 1.8.
I mean, I don't know, but I think we need to have more in-depth conversations with the town and the finance committee and figure out, you know, what if kinds of a thing.
Wally, you're muted.
Sorry about that. One of the things that's problematic right now is how little information we have. The state hasn't even quote unquote gone back to work. So we don't know anything about how that's going to look or, or go. We'll get, you know, anecdotal information as it starts and is in the early phases. It'll be some time before we get any receipts from whatever activity comes back from where we are now. We've got very limited experience with tax receipts. We do know that the largest property tax decrease in 08 to the, due to the 08 crash was about 3%. And, but we, you know, we, we, we have no sense yet of what we're going to look like in the fall as far as our learning environment goes. Are we going to be remote? Are we going to be in the buildings or are we going to have some hybrid of that? So the, you know, one of the, one of the problems about generating budget numbers right now is we're obviously making projections with very little data. We've not experienced something like this before. So we, you know, we don't have any historicals to fall back on. We do know that we can operate on a 1/12 budget for some time going into fiscal year 21. We will learn more both during the course of this month because Governor will make some decisions about going back to work. We may get some input about what to expect financially. And we'll have a better handle on tax, on Concord tax receipts. If we were going to have a June 22nd town meeting.
Wally, they did say that they're not having it.
Yeah, I know that the town moderators indicated that. Which, you know.
They're not having it? They are not.
There was discussion about not having it and considering moving it off into July. And, you know, the, the exercise for us to, to pair these budgets between now and what would amount to Thursday of next week, I think, in time for FinCom to be able to, to look at what we propose and make some assessment, which is going to be just as hard for them to do as, as it is for us to consider what we're going to cut. For them to get their book together to go to the publisher on the 22nd. If we're going to have a June 22nd town meeting.
Can we do a quick, wait a minute, can we do a quick touch base on last night? Because my understanding also watching the select board was that the moderator was going to be announcing that town meeting is pushed off from June 22nd, not specifying a new date yet. Is that everybody's understanding? Because I think that's something we need to, to touch base on and, and make sure we're all synced up on here.
That was my understanding as well.
I'm, I don't, I was, like I say, I wasn't on the call. I don't know that we have a firm shift. If we do, that would be valuable information, but I don't know that we have had anything from the town moderator yet.
Wally, this is Mike Lawson. I don't know if you can.
We can hear you. Yes, Mike, thanks for coming in here.
Yes, yesterday meeting, the moderator attended. We had a long discussion of the town's finances with two things in mind. One, just trying to understand where we were and what the fiscal year closed looked like. And second, to understand our ability to take advantage of the 1/12 legislation authorization to continue into the next fiscal year. And both of those were discussions and backdrop to a further discussion about town meeting. And I think it was a completely a consensus of the board and the town moderator. And I might add that I had invited the finance committee to join that meeting. And I think there were four or five members of the committee that attended. That we would be, the moderator would be postponing town meeting until sometime in the fall. I think it was September that was the preferred date. I think she'd indicated she'd had a conversation with the superintendent, but I may have gotten that wrong.
No, that's correct, Mike.
You'll recall that the moderator can postpone town meeting only for 30 days. So right now we're scheduled to have the town meeting at the end of May. And at the end of May, she'll postpone it till the June 22nd date, which is the one we were thinking about. And then as we approach that date, she'll postpone it till July and so on and so on and so on. and so on. And I think we did that for a number of reasons. One, we wanted to make sure we had as much possible information as we could, we could make good financial judgments. And we didn't want to put the finance committee in a, in a pickle of having to figure out what to do about the guideline going forward when things are so much up in the air. And second, you know, a town meeting is so important to the citizens of Concord that having some kind of abbreviated and odd Italian juke just didn't seem in keeping with what we would want to do. And given the age distribution of those attended town meeting, there was also the concern for just the safety and welfare of those who were attending. So moderator and I, at the meeting, agreed that we would develop a joint statement. And she's working on the first draft of that, sort of outlining the rationale for doing this, of the steps we will take going forward. And I think, Wally, I sent an email just a few minutes ago. Do you have a copy of the slot that the financial officer of the town presented at town, at the Select Board meeting yesterday, where she estimated tax revenues and expenditures going for fiscal 21? I don't know if that was distributed to you.
I have seen that.
I'll get you a copy of that and make sure.
I think Lori, you sent that to us, right?
Yeah, Lori sent it to all of us.
Yep, Carrie sent them to us last night, Mike, so I forwarded it.
Oh, great, thank you. So I just wanted to say that I hope that's helpful.
It is. So I think what I'm hearing is that we can, we can operate on a fairly strong assumption that there will be no town meeting June 22nd. And what I'm hearing is there won't be one until the fall.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That was the, that was the, I think, the intent of the town moderator, she so stated at our meeting yesterday.
We should hear something official on that.
We're meeting again next Thursday at 4 o'clock, and I've asked her to please attend. And again, she can't do a formal declaration, but what she can do is indicate formally her intent to do as I just described, so.
That's what I meant by formal, is something from the moderator to that effect.
But Mike, does the moderator, will the moderator benefit from any expressed sentiment from the school committee in regard to this? Or is it unnecessary?
I'm sure she would, I'm sure she would be happy to have sentiment from the school committee. I know she has spoken with the superintendent about this. I don't know whether she's spoken with either of the chairs of the school committees or not. I'm sure she would appreciate that. And I'd also indicated in a previous conversation with the town moderator that if that was the sentiment of the moderator to do as I described, that I think one of the next steps is to get a meeting put together with the superintendent, the chairs of your committee, myself and the clerk, and the town manager, and to get together with the, our counterparts in Carlisle, to at least let them know what we think we're going to do and have a discussion with them about that. So we'll be trying to move forward with that the next, early next week.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
David Modell here from Carlisle. So that, you know, we did discuss that question the other day up in Carlisle. And to your knowledge, if Carlisle, at least at the moment, intends to proceed with its town meeting, so the question is, I presume if, well, let me say this, if, if you push town meeting out to the fall, you're not voting on obviously a regional school budget until the fall, and we're just doing the 1/12 thing. So the questions that came up are, if, does Carlisle vote the town, the region budget that's on the table? Does it pull the article from the warrant book? Does it do, what does it do? Do you have any idea?
Well, that's exactly why we want to get together with our friends in Carlisle to have this discussion and.
Right, but it's more like a legal question.
Well, we've, we've contacted town council and raised the question with him, but that was just last night, and I haven't heard back from him yet.
Okay. Yeah, well, we're seeking, I mean, I'll say it publicly, it's not, you know, I think I can, I only speak for school committee, not for the Board of Selectment or the FinCom, but we, what we don't want is that we pass a budget that you don't, that you being Concord, and then we have to go to joint meeting, which is yet another meeting that we don't want to have.
That's exactly right, we don't want that.
So, right, so we definitely need guidance on that, and.
Yeah, I think the path forward is just get some legal advice here, and then let's get these two groups together and talk this through.
Right, oh yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would add with respect to the 1/12 expenditure pattern, if we do do that, you have to ask the Department of Revenue, you have to submit to them a plan. So I asked the town manager and the chief financial officer yesterday at our meeting to begin to have that plan together, because I don't think we want to wait till the last minute, get it submitted, and then have the Department of Revenue to be backed up and not able to act on our request. Also indicate, the legislation indicates not 1/12, but the language is actually not less than 12. And that was important to the town, because we have some large lump sum payments that we will need to make, or we would normally make during the first quarter. And we have, as I know you folks don't have a lot in your reserve account, but the town does, and we can make payments from the reserve account, or we can propose a plan spending more than 1/12 of our budget in the first couple of months to make those lump sum payments. So I think the chief financial officer will, will be reaching out, I'm sure, to the superintendent and to Jared, to, to help put that plan together. So we will decide, if we decide to do that, we have it ready to go and get it submitted to the Department of Revenue as soon as we can.
Thank you, Mike. And that's, that's very helpful. So.
So I had a little trouble hearing, can somebody restate the, the path to the 1/12 plan from the town of Concord? What's the timeline?
Do you want me to restate it, Cynthia?
Can you hear Mike?
I just, where does the school committee come into the flow?
Well, separating the regional issue, which we talked about. We would need to know from the public school, you know, what its spending needs are going to be if we decide to adopt the 1/12 spending pattern. So when the chief financial officer is putting this proposal together for the town, she's going to need him from you folks about what requirements you're going to have, so that can be included in the plan.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we have done some of that exercise already, correct?
Yeah, I did five years' worth of run rates, in both budgets, but speaking in CPS, I'm not concerned with the 1/12, especially in the beginning part of the year. And at the region, we won't have any trouble up until our first debt payment in December.
In December, yeah.
So we haven't discussed this potential summer?
Summer would not be impacted.
No, but if we, we have any program change for the summer?
Well, you've been running it based off of the normal, typical summer programming, so the run rate includes that cost?
It does. But what if we adopt something that's beyond normal?
We are, we're running at maybe 60% of a, 60% at full. So even if we adopted another program, you would need to have, we would need to, it would be a million and a half a month more, give or take, at CPS for that to really impact us. And the way that 1/12 work, you can carry over your available balance month to month. So, so if your budget is 3 million, and you only spend a million in July, your new budget in August is 5 million. And then it rolls over to September. You just can't spend more than, if you're in September, you can't end September spending over three months. So it carries over.
Right, but my question is, what are the town, as I said, are prepaying things? So our piece of the pie, that 1/12 is much smaller. That, I mean, I don't know that to be true, I'm just, you know, that's just.
I'm not sure if that, I'd have to look into that as well, I don't know how that would really work. I'm not sure our budget can be lower than FY '20's 1/12, but.
So, you know, I just have, don't have enough information to know, so maybe we could just get more information for next week or something?
Wait, can I clarify, though? My understanding is that each district in the town are using 1/12 of their own budgets separately.
I think it is one bucket of money. I mean, the town is a one bucket.
We had some conversation with Stephen and Carrie about this yesterday, and we didn't have the answers. That was the question. Is it, do we have to proportion it based on our typical spending, or is there movement within the overall 1/12? We didn't have that answer, is on the discussion table.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that we have to get clear on how to approach the Department of Revenue to put a, a spending plan before them. If it's over 1/12, or in any event, Mike, do they need to approve? It's the latter, isn't it?
In any event.
In any event, yeah, okay.
And we actually submit the regional one.
Right.
Which we've already started, it's not a, I've done this before, so it's not, it's, it's not an intense process. For us, it could be for the town.
Thanks, Jared.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the wild cards here is that most towns are probably going to, many towns, many more towns, exponentially more towns are going to be doing this. So you would expect the DOR will have to come up with some way to streamline this and give people comfort that they're doing the right thing. And, but I appreciate the work that's been done, both by the town and by our staff, to understand the abilities to be able to do this. And it sounds like, like we can do it, and what we're hearing here is just how, how uncertain things are for the coming year. You know, we just finished rolling out Phase 3, as we call it, and, you know, there will be tweaks to that operationally between now and the end of the school year, but, you know, we turn our attention to Phase 4, in the event we have to do remote learning in the fall, which is going to help from our ability to put together budget, budgets to, to address what is the new reality for fiscal year 21. And I, what, what I think we want to try to convey here is, we're not trying to avoid the exercise of doing a revised budget. We understand the need to do a revised budget. We will do a revised budget. I think, you know, generally, what we, what we would like to convey is that we want to do that with as much real information as we can, followed up by as much anecdotal information as we can get. And, you know, some of that requires financial experience, some of it requires an understanding of what we will be budgeting for from a delivery standpoint. And some of it depends upon what we see around us as we try to wind ourselves back into a functioning economy in Massachusetts and the nation, all of which is changing daily. And, you know, so I think, I think we are on a path to be able to do the things that, that we as districts can do to understand our needs. And, you know, the overarching piece of this, which hasn't been stated in any of this yet for the school committee, is to provide the best education to the students of Concord as we can. Certainly with that lens, that I think we want to be able to look through this, you know, not Concord and Carlisle and our Boston students, to be able to look at this and, and ensure that we are doing what we can to provide that best education, understanding the realities of what we're faced with here. And those realities are quite uncertain at the moment. I certainly believe that it's beneficial to us, and I thank the Select Board and moderator for having this conversation about moving this to the fall, because I think we will all be better equipped to understand what we need and what we have, and what we are, our estimations and speculations at that time will be far better informed than they are right now.
So on that note, Wally started jumping, can we just confirm here if we want to share our support of that plan with the moderator? I don't think we need an official vote or anything, but can we just get kind of nods of heads or feel from committee members? From both committees' standpoint, is everybody comfortable with the chairs reaching out to the moderator to express support of the plan to push town meeting back to ideally the fall?
Well, I think there's some discussion there, and I don't know that, you know, the vote might be worthwhile.
Maybe it is. So I just, I want to make sure we address that in our discussion now, so that, before we move on.
I think one of the things I would throw out here is, is to the Carlisle contingent of the regional committee, what is your feeling about the committee making that sort of statement to Concord, recognizing that as of the moment, Carlisle is still working toward having a June town meeting?
You know, I think as long as, what are we talking to Michael about? I mean, I think we need, we need clarity on what we do. We, we don't, I don't think Carlisle really cares whether Concord delays or doesn't delay its meeting, as long as we get guidance on what to do about the region. I, I personally think that Carlisle will get to the same place in a different way. I think they'll push to have the meeting, but it'll be a very abbreviated meeting that will essentially take up a resolution or whatever to do 1/12, and maybe there's some other things they have to housekeep. But I can't imagine, given the exercise that the Carlisle FinCom is going through that you mentioned earlier, that there's going to be any time to create a new guideline budget, for example, that would be voted on. So I think it's kind of a distinction without a difference.
Okay.
So personally, I would say I do support Concord making that move, because maybe that will, you know, sort of force the issue with Carlisle. I have to say, it's a personal opinion, and that's not a.
Thank you, and that's what we all give and to vote. Does anybody have a, is anybody disinclined to offer that guidance, sort of a voted guidance from our committees to the town moderator of Concord?
I guess what I could offer up is, I'm not endorsing fall per se, but rather, on the basis of what we have heard over the last 24 hours regarding her conversation with the Select Board, I would endorse the, if you will, conservative approach she's taking that allows us more time to ensure health priorities are met, and more time for information to inform budgets. I don't care if it's September or not, what I care about is the caution that she's bringing to the process.
Right, and I, I would like to see more information regarding the 1/12 budgeting process, now that we need to do it both districts.
So I think, toss one thing in here, I think it would be unfortunate to have a town meeting in July or August. You know, every year, in the vast, significant number of people basically decamp from Concord and go to places that otherwise. And I suspect that that will be pretty significant this year, even among people who don't normally do it. But, so, which is, if, I think if, I would recommend if we were going to have a vote, that we include moving to fall, which is a little different than what I just heard from, from Court and Cynthia.
No. No, I actually.
No, no, I actually, yeah, it's easy to misunderstand what I said. Now, this town and district has had a long aversion to summer town meetings and for, for good reason. What I meant was September, if it's safe to do so. So I'm, I'm fine with your September marker and, and avoid the summer, but I'm also mindful that what's more important than the month of September is the information we need that gives us some financial confidence and some public health confidence. And we're guessing that that will be coming our way in September, but that's a mere guess at this point.
Good. So, I think, should we can put this to bed? In general, feel we should take a vote?
It can hurt. Let's do that.
Sure.
So the next is what does that say? And I'm, I'm just, you know, the, I think the, let me, let me take a stab at this. Can I have a motion for both committees that the committee will share its desire for town meeting to be delayed to September or later of 2020? And send that to the town moderator and the select board.
I would ask you to insert the word Concord in there just for clarity.
Good point. The town moderator and Concord select board.
I think that's sufficient.
You know, that motion.
Do we have a motion for both committees?
I so move.
Second for both?
Good. Any further discussion on that?
So are Carlileans voting on this?
This, the region, no.
I'm sorry.
I would say you either, you can vote for it, you can vote against it, or you can abstain if you're uncomfortable, given this sort of uncertainty about what that looks like.
Concordy, yeah, I don't, I guess I question why the region would, I think that maybe the C, K through eight team should vote it. And the region should not vote it because the addition of Eva and myself is irrelevant. We're not, it's, we shouldn't be voting on a Concord matter.
No, but it's not a Concord matter. It's whether the regional committee expresses this opinion to the Concord moderator. And you're a part of the regional committee, so you could say.
All right, I give up.
Let's.
We don't have to.
I agree. I do agree. I actually agree. I'm not saying it just to.
I just want to throw this out. Does the regional committee want to make this request of both towns?
I think we, yeah, that I would be better, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we have two, two votes? A vote for Concord.
Yeah.
Yes, and either one of you take that.
Call the event. Just quickly, any further discussion on the Concord resolution to the Concord moderator and select board? Okay, then by, by roll call, Rainey?
Hi.
Johnston?
Hi.
Booth?
Aye.
And about I. So that passes for Concord. Thank you.
And so a motion to request of both town moderators, Carlisle and Concord, and send to both select boards, Carlisle and Concord, a request that town meeting be held off until the fall.
I move that.
I have a second?
I'll second Heather.
We need a second?
Let it, let it Concord.
We have a second? Any further?
I second that. This is Heather.
Yeah, Heather seconded it. So David proposed it, Heather seconded it. Any further discussion on that? And we'll proceed to the role. Rainey?
Aye.
Aye.
Booth?
Aye.
Stoffey?
Most of the aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Johnston aye. Okay. So let's, we had to sort of schedule the 12:15 end for this, but I want to get a sense if we've, one, had enough discussion about the budget to, for the superintendent and finance director and a couple of us from the school committee to participate in the FinCom meeting in Carlisle on Monday night. In a way is satisfactory to what they're looking for at this point. And I sort of first looked at the superintendent.
Yeah, I, I sort of thought that. It's hard to tell sometimes on the Zoom square. I think the only clarity we need, we can bring the list of, because really the request was to show what the 5% cut would indicate. We've given the list of options, which is a bit of a menu. So to some extent, we're not that far from the 5%. I guess the question is whether you feel that's a sufficient piece to bring them, essentially what you've already seen today. Or, you know, obviously to go deeper than that is a rushed job and I'm a little nervous to put out how I would cut beyond that, given that it does start to impact programs and people without having had a chance to show it to all of you and really feel confident in it. So I think that's the question is whether bringing what we've already talked about is comfortable for the committee, given it's not exactly what they asked for, but it certainly will give us lots to talk about.
If I might, I, I would hope that we could share what Jared suggested with us, options toward that 5% to let the FinCom know that we have resources that can, can be moved to accommodate what might happen. And that's the big caveat, the, the what might happen, we don't know. Hence the 5% being with all due respect, simply an exercise at this point. Not a useful one, but an exercise. Secondly, I think we should convey that this committee is, is prepared to do its best to accommodate when the unknowns become knowns, you know, that sort of general assurance. And to introduce in this meeting, a new topic, but it's not new, I'm sure to Jared and Lori. I would suggest that it's not premature to begin work, it's probably already underway, on a zero-based approach to a remote teaching fiscal 21. With the considerable potential that we're going to have some kind of hybrid of remote and, and on-ground teaching, the likes of which we can't really predict right now. Hence, we've got to paint some picture for remote learning and it's not premature to do that with the idea that we have a, a budget well-known to us for a year that probably isn't going to happen. We need another budget for remote learning, which hopefully won't be what our entire year looks like. But at least we'd have those two scenarios so that we can then work, work both approaches fiscally to, to accommodate the educational delivery that public health is going to demand of us. So my third piece to repeat is I would hope we were committed to a zero-based exercise on remote learning for fiscal 21 so that we have that more, more prepared for when more information becomes known to us, even though it's hypothetical.
Yeah, so we've, we are having these conversations, absolutely. And I think the part we'll need to bring to you is the plan that accommodates all of the options. And to me, that's the challenge because remote learning in and of itself, if we were going to know that was the plan a whole year, that's a less costly endeavor. We've proven that in the last few months. It's the fluidity and the back and forth and the, all the different ways that can happen. Because there's a lot of ways that, as we talk about phase four shortly, there's a lot of variables about how, how we could have remote learning play a part. So we are starting those, we are having those conversations. In fact, today we were having them. So we're trying to work that for you as fast as we can.
Yeah, how do we have multiple budgets and more agility than we've ever expected that we'd have to exercise?
Yeah, we're the real priority on a new lens of what reality likely is. For example, field trips. There's a large, I don't believe we need the full budget that's in there because I don't think field trips are going to happen for at least the first portion of the year, if not the whole year. So those are the other lenses we're trying to put on of just the new lens we have about safety and health and limitations. So that, that's coming to you as quickly as we can.
So there's something in this that I'd like to come back to, but I kind of want to get us to the point where we've wrapped up this question about do we have what we need for our meeting Monday night? And I wouldn't be surprised if there ends up being a Concord FinCom meeting sometime next week. Are we, I defer here to David and Ava who have gone through this in more detail in Carlisle with their CPS. Are you hearing what you think would be at least a continuing the conversation with Carlisle FinCom?
Yeah, I think the, I mean, from the Carlisle school committee side, the debate we're having is sort of how much free cash to give versus how much to cut in 21. Like Jared, the Carlisle public is in a pretty good free cash position at the moment because, you know, we didn't spend much in the fourth academic quarter. I mean, we spent on salaries, but no, no discretionary. So we, I'm speaking for me maybe, would prefer to give the town some cash now and not sort of endure draconian cuts in fiscal 21. And the alternative to that is to, is to prepay lots of stuff and not have as much free cash, but also, you know, have insurance policy against 21. And the FinCom has been sort of a back and forth. It's said, well, there are really two different discussions. One is what, what does a 5% cut look like? We want to understand the impact of a 5% cut. And separately, we want to understand how much cash versus prepay, and then we'll put everything together. So we, we bashed that around for a while and I guess I finally grudgingly agreed with them that, you know, there, there are two, I would say this, there are two academic exercises that at the end get merged into an actual plan. So the academic exercise that academic is, is not the right word, but the exercise we're going through of the 5% is simply to give that FinCom an understanding of what the impact of cuts would be on the service delivery model. So you can't cut that deep, I don't think, without some, you know, reduction in the number of teachers you have. And so if that's true, then you have a real service delivery issue. You have fewer class offerings or you have larger class sizes or, you know, some combination. And then secondly, maybe you're cutting extracurriculars, you know, the quality of the, what we call in Carlisle, the educational enrichment portion goes down because you don't have as many nice things, right? And so the FinCom, and I would say Concord as well, need to understand that, right? That we're, we're a top-rated school in the, in the Commonwealth for a reason, right? And property values, you know, are high for a reason. So I always feel like they need to hear that lots. But okay, so, so you go through an exercise to say, not specifically, but in, in a general way, these are the compromises that will result from that kind of cut. And, okay, so that's an exercise. And then separately, the exercise Jared's going through, you know, and the regions, the regions will easier because I don't think we need their permission to prepay or top off E and D or all the other bells and whistles. So we're, we're doing these other things to maintain the region's financial security. And by the way, there's free cash available, you know, after all that, let's, I'm just saying hypothetically. And please don't forget about us, you know, that money really should kind of go into a reserve fund in case we run into trouble in fiscal 21 for whatever bunch of reasons, some of which Court mentioned, you know, we've discussed. So that's kind of the approach we're taking. And yes, to answer, this is a long way to answer your question, Wally, but it's a dialogue, you know, we've had sort of round one on Monday and Tuesday for the region is round two. It's, that's brief. There's only 20 minutes or, you know, maybe a little more because we're at the end of the agenda to kind of get their understanding up to a level. And then one reason I certainly support the resolution we just did, or whatever we call it, that recommends pushing town meeting out is why make all these consequential decisions in, you know, in absence of real information?
No information.
Yeah, go ahead, Eva. Thank you. Would you want to say?
Could I just add? Yes, yes. So I, I do agree with the, with the pushing of, of the town meeting till, till the fall. Not only because of the health reasons, the, the health concerns, but in an actuality, we don't have we're, the exercise of cutting budget and looking where the cuts are going to go, what, you know, what will be the repercussions or what our programming is going to look like, it's all great. But once we have more information, and if there is a possibility to request that information from CDC, and now that they have some recommendations on, on what that release of public and going back to, to work and school should look like, that will guide what, what the budget is actually going to look like. Because if we will have a combination of some kids going to school, some parents, some, some families not going to school, there, there will be big budgetary considerations. How do we, as a school, make it happen as people can go back to work? You, you can't have an economy if the kids, you know, especially young kids are, are at home. On, on the other hand, summer, summer is going to be that experimental time in Europe where we will be getting more data. So without all of that information coming from other countries, the CDC, it's really hard to come up with a budget that really makes sense because we can go through all of these exercises and then it blows up and it, it doesn't, it doesn't reflect what the actual costs of providing even basic education will look like starting September.
Thank you.
But I would also ask that, you know, as, as we're going through those exercises, teachers and coaches and they have been on the forefront of this COVID-19 reality. So they understand living, living, you know, living through this, they understand what accommodations they can make to increase the safety, you know, what. So I would love to see some of the feedback coming back to the school committee from, from that source as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I think anybody with school-aged kids at home would view teachers as essential workers.
No kidding.
Lots of the day.
Yes.
It's up to them. So I think we have what we need. And, you know, just also reflect that, you know, we are prepared to, to engage in this process fully as we learn more information and we are able to do some of the essential work we need to do to understand the needs for next year and, you know, base our, our budget requests on that once we do have a town meeting. So two things, and I've scripted a little bit, but there was some, about a, some sort of a task force in the districts to help in this.
Yeah, I'll bring that whole, yeah, let me, let's save that for our next meeting, which I think probably should be sooner than later and we can really have a in-depth conversation. Yeah.
Yeah, and I only bring it up here so that it's not new when we come next week in case that's something that's going to form and we, and we would like to take a vote on it next week. I don't want people to have to do it without any, any pre-warning. And then that leads me to what I hope might be the last thing we talk about. I should have looked at the agenda first. But the, I do hear that we, oh, there are a couple of things here that we did talk about, but I'll bring this on. I think we do need to have a meeting next week, at least on the books.
Lolly, question if I might, maybe I missed it. Is it clear enough what you were just referring to that Lori responded to vis a vis phase four?
Yeah, I feel like we can, let's just wait and do it in depth next week. If, if you decide you need a vote, it's okay if it's another week out, I think. We're, we're, there's options there that could be voted options and options that aren't. So don't feel rushed. options there that could be voted options and options that aren't. So don't feel rushed. I'd rather.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I was simply trying to be certain that if Wally wanted it noted as an item for part one of what's going to follow, that everybody knew what he was talking about.
Sure.
Good. So do we want to do, I think Thursday might be a better day than Friday, but what, do it, I guess, first, do we have an agreement that we need a meeting? And then we can just pick a date by sending an email around.
Yeah, I would, Wally, yeah. Did you say you think the FinCom and Concord's going to meet next week? Yes, next week?
I just, you know, they, they haven't been meeting because if there was a request not to meet.
Right, understood.
And, you know, now that they're, you know, I suspect their conversations will, will pivot a bit if they're not engaged in trying to get decisions made for a 522 publication of their booklet and not a June 22 town meeting. So I think we just have to, from that standpoint, we should just stand by and see.
I'm going to try to be done by about two.
Their approach. So we'll send something around to set a meeting for next week. There were two other things on the agenda. The update on phase three, remote learning and withdrawal from EdCo collaborative.
I, if, I know we're trying to keep an eye on the time. I could be brief on phase three. We're actually in between the presentation you got last week and the beginning of phase three, which is Monday. So next week, we'll have a lot more to share, I think, as we've lived the first week. We've done a lot of preparatory work this week with parents and kids. By Tuesday, well, four of the schools have held parent meetings this week. The fifth is, is on Tuesday. Kids have had sessions with the leaders at middle and high school. The teachers have all been part of ongoing discussions and meetings and supports where needed. I feel like we're in good shape to start on Monday. I don't have a whole lot more to say because next week's rollout will be where we have more to, to talk about, I expect. And I can certainly make that part of our, it's the prelude to phase four in summer. So as we talk on all of those, they all get revisited, certainly. That's great.
Any questions or discussion on that right now? So can we move on to the Edco piece?
Yes. And I've, and I should do this at a high level since the committees had a little bit of documentation about this. We're members of the EdCo collaborative, a very longstanding collaborative member board of public school systems. There's 11 of us. What's evolved over the last 10 months has been a fairly, very serious fiscal situation with some unknowns being brought to light with deficits in the FY20 budget, both in operating and some debt that was occurred. So the districts have had to compensate for some of that with additional membership costs this year. It's a combination of some accounting issues in the central office at EdCo, as well as over anticipating revenues for the special education programs. EdCo is really a combination of services. It's professional development, it's special ed programs. And then there's other entities unto themselves. A migrant program has existed in Boston and a, a number of others. Given the financial situation that we are finding ourselves in, and the really beginning looks at FY21, which continue to work in a deficit model, I have been reviewing our benefits from EdCo. And right now, we don't have any students in the programs for special education. We benefit from the professional development, but we, we would benefit anyway. We get small discounts sometimes for membership, but we could always participate with a little bit more attached to the things we actually choose to engage with. I don't see a great reason to stay part of a collaborative where I feel like right now I need to report feeling the responsibility as the board, board member who votes, some real concern about the well-being of the two districts that I represent there versus the well-being of the collaborative on the whole. And that's really hard for me to say. This has been a really dynamic group of leaders and a real mission and driven and pride that's gone into the EdCo history of 50 years. But given the past 10 months and the projections I've seen to date for '21, I would, I am recommending that we withdraw. So that requires a school committee vote. What today was, was to put it on the, on the first pass of giving you information. We would put it back on the next agenda for a formal vote. And I can certainly provide any other facts in between now and then to, to be sure we've shared everything you need to hear for that consideration. Just in terms of timing, we need to vote by the end of June. The withdrawal can only happen on a fiscal year cycle. So if we miss the, the June 30 of this year, we are obliged to stay in and continue through the next fiscal year to not have it be an abrupt withdrawal. That's part of the agreement of the collaborative. But if we miss this June 30th, then it's a whole fiscal year out to even notice them. And then another year goes by. So if we, there is some timeliness to it. And I can provide any other information you need to the next meeting.
Good. So I think we can hold off on questions about that either directly to you or for next, the next meeting. So unless there's anything else that people want to add here, we're probably ready to adjourn to executive session. Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Well, we need to, let me read this. Can I have a motion for both committees? That the Concord School Committee and the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect, the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and not to return to open session. Got that motion?
So move? For both. Thank you.
I got a second. Rainey?
For both.
We need to roll.
Aye for both.
Mustafi for region? Sorry.
Aye for both.
Maudell?
Aye for region.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both. Thank you. See you. See you in a minute.